Over, Mather. Okay, welcome. Uh, as, as always, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Okay, anyone here for open session? Tom, you here for open session?
No.
One thing we will have is Joyce needs to come over and get signatures for the election ballots.
We'll just peel right back to it when, when we need to.
Yeah. Okay. Alright.
Alright.
So, let's start with the charter communications license renewal. Tom, if you wanna come up?
Sure.
Did they ever get back to us on the fiber optic question we asked about?
Well, that's what we're gonna discuss.
I'm gonna talk to that, a couple of things. Uh, I think you guys got a copy of this
Yes.
from the lawyer, just a synopsis of how, what this thing was all about and what we've signed up to, or what we're, we will eventually sign up to. Uh, we met this afternoon with the idea of going through this, satisfying ourselves one more time and coming in here and saying, "Let's go do it."
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're gonna recommend that we delay that for another month. Um, as you know, it was supposed to be, this thing was supposed to have been accomplished the end of June, uh, and it's been moved out a couple of months while we waited for Charter and Time Warner to come to agreement on their relationship, which apparently they have, or we wouldn't be going forward at this point.
Mm-hmm.
But we had some things in here and some discussions today that we wanna follow up on and, um, there's some things in this that might, might, uh, I'll just call them out or I'll show them to you so that, uh, in, on our first page, uh, down under B, cable service, they, the, the service area is the entire town subject to te- setbacks of a hundred and fifty feet and a density of twenty mine, twenty homes a mile. Um, I do recall when we went through that, this is a standard term that they use. Uh, but we had some discussion today about, um, some of our back roads that are probably not to, you know, and that they got to be further apart than that. So, uh, we're gonna, we're just, I don't think that we'll get any, any, uh, change in this, but we do wanna make it an issue and just bring that back to it.
Who did you, if I can interrupt, who'd you meet with? Did you meet with the, the rep that we met?
Yes.
Our charter rep, same guy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, over on, uh, let's see, what's in the next page, right for, to inspect for information. The second page down at the bottom, triple I there.
Yep.
Uh, Charter will make available for inspection by any authorized representative of the Selectmen. All books and records pertaining to Charter's provision of cable service upon advance or notice. And, uh, we're going to ask them to and/or the Cable Advisory Committee, so that you guys don't have to do it.
Thank you.
And there was another, uh...
On the next page, the top of the next page, it also says Selectmen.
Right, the right to inspect the cable system on the top in IV. Where exists evidence, cats and doubt upon the reliability or technical quality of the system, the Selectmen will have the right to inspect the system on a knock and interfere basis, and we're just gonna make the same change there, the add or change. Uh, we had a long discussion about, um, you know, every time we sit down at the table with them, there is, there are no complaints on their books. Uh, we all hear them.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, uh, it's not our fault, I think, all of us, that sometimes we don't ask them when they're complaining. You know, what day did it happen? Who did you call? And, you know, what were the specifics of it? It was pointed out to us, uh, by Brittany today that oftentimes that when you call, and I was trying to think back, 'cause I had some trouble with them a couple of months ago, that, uh, they kinda switch after they get done talking to you into a bit of a sales pitch on, uh, expanding your coverage or whatever you're doing, and they log that as a sales call instead of a complaint.
Hmm.
So, we, we talked with Rayanne today, and we're looking at, uh, at putting on the, maybe putting on the website, a, a form that, um, you could fill out. Um, people, you know, people just don't, as much as they used to be able to pick up the phone and talk to anybody, they just don't do that anymore. So, maybe if we can get them to fill out a form, and then when we come to negotiations ten years from now, or if there's some other issue that comes up, we'll have some data, because, you know, we sat here at the table and we all had some specifics, and, uh, so we're gonna, we actually have a couple of roads that we know are some of our problems. Flag Road's one, uh, some on Hillville Road have, uh, you know, kind of continuing off and on problems. So, we're gonna try to sort those out a little bit, and that, that won't be a reason to delay coming back next month. Uh, but we do want to bring up a couple of issues. First off, uh, they're supposed to start on, you know, had we signed up the first of July, they would be paying us around around ten grand a month.
Mm-hmm.
So, we would like to see that
Retroactive.
for the two, the two months.
Yep.
Because this delay was not our delay, that was their delay. So, we're gonna make that point in writing to them before we ask you to sign up.
Did you mention that to them today?
We will.
Okay.
They weren't here today, so
Oh, okay.
we, we will get to them. Uh, Rayanne's gonna contact them and get back to them. Now, in addition, thirty day, thirty days, within thirty days of signing up, of signing the contract, they, they have a, a thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, equipment, uh, thing that's part of that contract. We're just gonna reiterate that, uh, you know, that's tardy too.
Mm-hmm.
So, we need to get to that. We're not in trouble money-wise, but we just need to keep, uh, the hammer down a little bit.
Great.
Make sure that everything's going well. So, I mean, I didn't, were there any other things that we talked about?
Uh, the fiber optic.
Oh, yeah. Uh, you know, the, we put, we made a big thing about trying to get fiber optic cable here. And, and I went back to my notes when I got home, and, and their answer was, "Well, you know, there are, there are fiber optic
To the hubs.
nodes in Hovers."
Nodes, yep.
And, uh, but they, they're expensive to hook up, and, but if you wanna, you know, cap, cough up the cash, I guess you could probably get that done. But we never really got anywhere from that, and, and, uh, so we, we wanna reiterate that. We're gonna just tell them, you know, "It's not here, but you did promise us we were going to have it by twenty seventeen." So, you know, we want, we want that confirmed in writing to us before we tell you guys to sign that up. Um, and of course, right in that was, uh, Al Alfonso had picked up a piece of thing, and I kept, and he sent it to me, and I looked it up, and lever, lever, it's out.
I drove through it today.
Hundred percent fiber optic, all the way to every house in town.
Hmm.
And you, so you can't say, "Well, it's your way out in the country," and because lever's further out there than we are, so...
It is. It's a little closer to, like, Northampton, Anderson area, the colleges and stuff.
And I suspect they probably have more people in the legislature than we do right now.
Maybe.
Could be.
Yep, it's a good example, though.
So, anyway, that's, we're gonna follow up on those things. So, I just wanted to come in and tell you that, uh, we, we're recommending that we, we hold off until we can, uh, address a few of these other, just, they're ancillary issues, but we need to make sure that all of our members on the committee are being represented in their opinions and the things they want, uh, us to address, and then we'll get something back from them, and we'll be back hopefully next month.
Okay. Yeah, that retroactive payment thing is pretty important to what we're doing around here.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Any questions? Anything else we can do for you? I don't think so. I think you're all over it.
Yeah, we're trying to be.
So, I'll put it on the September sixth agenda to revisit it, and hopefully we'll have our answers back by then.
Great, sounds good.
Alright, thanks, Tom. Alright, if we can call Joyce up real quickly to have the signatures.
Sounds good. Hi, Joyce.
So, I just have, uh, the warrants for both the state primary and the special election that are on September eighth.
Yep.
That need to be signed, there's five copies, and I think we need a vote to sign them.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we sign the, uh, state primary and the special election.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? You all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
I didn't put little stickies on there, but there's five in that round.
Yeah, there's five on there.
I'll watch. Seems kinda early to be doing this, but since you're not having a meeting on the twenty-second, which is when I was going to do it, that's why it's being done tonight.
How's it going?
Good. She's doing great.
Great.
Yeah, second week. Yeah. Now that I'm back, I know there'll be a lot more work. Yeah, things are looking up in all departments.
That's good.
Hopefully.
I know. Jamie, you're gonna start going to RJ head out of town.
Yeah.
I'm like holding everybody up.
That's what my husband did. He went from Richard W. to RW.
Michael, Michael's just an M. That's about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
There you go.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you, Joyce. See you around.
Good night.
Okay, next up, we have Ragged Hill Lots. So, you had asked previously on where it stands.
Yeah.
And you all have a map. So, Lot One is the Vincent Land Swap. So, that is going to be completed hopefully in the next two or three weeks. It's going through the legislature right now.
So, wait, we're heading north.
So, yeah. So, lots two through five, the planning board would like to have one reserved for affordable housing. I just need to mention that the plan that they have that mentioned in has expired. So, they're looking to revise it right now, but it's still open. So, you have the option of still continuing to keep one as affordable housing, or put all four lots up for sale, or you can do one, or just keep them the way they are.
Now, the original, um, agreement that the town voted on,
Mm-hmm.
was that to sell all the lots?
Yes, but then the Selectmen at the time voted for that one. But yes, the town vote was to sell all five lots.
Well, the town voted to, to the Vincent Land Swap as well.
Right, and then they voted that afterwards, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that pulled it out, so we still, we have four. I mean, it's why we brought it up, right? Otherwise, nothing.
Right, and then Paul had mentioned to me today when he came to see me, there's an additional two lots right here that you can get to. From what street was that? New Templeton?
There it is, comes off of the New Templeton.
Right, so there's two other lots here that, that you can get to, to New Templeton, and also town-owned.
Oh, really?
Right.
Hmm.
Well, I don't know, uh, again, uh,
With frontage?
when we did, we looked at it, all hell, right, in the road.
Yeah, 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 thanks.
Um, we looked at it, uh, the New Templeton's side of it, which is the way you'd have to get in, has a little bit of, if you go up there, you go heading towards Templeton, there's two, uh, swamps. There's a first swamp and then the second swamp. Well, the second swamp, just before you go around that slight hill and up the curve there, uh, that's where the two lots come out. And the first lot on there is, uh, it's probably a little damp.
Is there enough frontage there?
Um, yeah, all this definitely frontage.
Yeah.
But, so, I don't have all the detail on those lots, and, uh, I'm very concerned with the five on Ragged Hill Road.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, the, the second lot heading north, uh, is where that, I'll say rip rap, I don't know if I said that correctly or not, but when they did New Templeton Road, they dumped some stuff in there.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to go up a bit. It would be a climb right off the road, and then goes down. To me, that's buildable, but I'm not a builder or anything like that, so...
So, so you said you were, you know, cons, I think the word you just used was concerned about the five lots on Ragged Hill.
Right.
What, what do you, what do you mean? Like, what, why, what do you?
Uh, when they were, those three people in this town that, uh, went looking for lots to, uh, hit back on the market.
Mm-hmm.
And this was a major one. You may be talking to an individual that worked on it, I'm not sure, but, uh, they were, uh, all planned, and they're a little over two acres on each of them, uh, the, the first, uh, first lot that I guess is going to the Vincents is three or something, and because that's a
Five acres.
Yeah, five, that was a good deal. Uh, oh, did they comment on that? Uh, but anyways, uh, the, the plan was to get these into, uh, productive tax, uh,
Yeah, exactly.
lots again. They're beautiful lots, they perk, uh, all kinds of gravel up there, and I just think there's four house lots that would make excellent houses for folks. Now, we kinda hung on to it a little too long, but at one time, we could've probably got eighty K apiece for those lots. Now, I don't know the exact number on it, but it's...
Well, part of the, just to interrupt you, oh, sorry, but, uh, about the, and I agree, I think it's absolutely a good idea, that's why we're talking about it tonight, but there had been some incorrect calculations done by, um, the affordable housing people based on total square footage in town that had to be, could potentially be exempt from the requirements state of Massachusetts, which is why this was originally being, um, retained, I think, or even investigated as far uh, as, uh, because the calculations were different, and this was gonna give us a certain amount of, you know, closer to the number that we're supposed to have. So, anyway, I don't know if you know all that, or if that even makes a lot of sense, but basically, that's, now that's gone, because we found out somewhat recently that those calculations were incorrect, and it doesn't matter. We're, we're never going to be able to comply with the actual requirements for it. So, I think that's why we're talking about it again. I mean, I don't, you guys are, I'm, I'm all for it.
Oh, I'm for it.
Yeah, sell them.
Selling them.
Sell them.
I mean, I think-
Oh, you wanna put all four up on the market?
Yeah.
I think the reason they held off, the last time this was brought up, there was discussion, of course, the, the market was way down, and plus the road was so bad.
Yeah.
And they said, "Hey, once the roads improved,"
Yep.
um, it'd be more-
Yeah, that's a huge, it's a huge plus.
Oh, absolutely.
The, the road is, is beautiful.
So, yeah, I, I don't know, I'm all for it. I don't know.
Yeah, you wanna take a vote on that?
I think so.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, sell all four lots.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Uh, I don't know, uh, can you put a, can you put a timing on when we'd like to get these sold, or get them into real estate?
Yeah, we should probably have-
Because what happens is, this thing keeps going on, and you guys are busy, you guys and girls are busy, 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 and this doesn't need to keep coming up, and, yeah.
Well, we do get them appraised from a Realtor, and...
I don't know, let's say, you wanna say, like, by the end of August?
Okay.
'Cause then it's, you know, it's, it's tougher to sell stuff in the winter, too. So, if we have September, October.
That's prime selling.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Trees are, I mean, there's beautiful trees there, the home down.
Alright, wanna look into it, and then, um,
Are we gonna vote this week?
See if there's any impediment?
Alright, so you still have to make the motion, 'cause you guys have been doing a lot of things.
We're, we're in the active motion phase, discussion. Any, any further discussion? Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay, the next is chapter sixty-one policy.
Thank you guys very much. Guys and girls, thanks a lot. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
I think I got a few more ears, but I'm gonna keep coming back. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Okay. Alright, Paul, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, good night.
Alright, so the next is, thanks, Paul. Uh, the sixty, chapter sixty-one policy, chapter sixty-one is when you make land, you have forestry, agriculture, or, or open space. It, we usually follow the state guidelines, but we don't have our own policies, so this is just making a Hubbard's and policy.
Is there a reason this came up?
Yes, Open Space Committee asked for our particular policy, and so I discovered we didn't have one. And so, this would be accepting this into, it's basically the same, this is-
And who would put this together?
Who would?
Yeah, and who, or, we're just gonna adopt a po, existing policy from somewhere else, that's literally-
It just adopted an existing policy, but it's geared, it's geared to Tazza Hill, that town of first, and it just shows the procedure that we would go through if it does come up.
Okay.
And that's if someone puts their land under sixty-one A, then the tax is deferred, and then if the town gets the right of first refusal.
Right, so after, if they decide it's, after ten years, it's not gonna be under sixty-one A, we would get the right of first refusal.
Yeah, they would, yeah.
So, we just wanna make a motion to adopt that.
I'll make a motion to adopt the new chapter sixty-one policy.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? You all in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay, now is the special town meeting. First, assignment of articles. Who would like to take which articles if any questions are asked?
What order do we have?
Uh, we have, the first one is the override. Two and three are the police budget increases, and then Article Four is regarding the rent.
I'll, I'll do the first one.
What's the second one?
Second.
The second one is the hiring of full-time officer from part-time to full-time.
I think Jeff and, um, Mike will take three and four. Yeah, sounds good.
Alright, so who's taking two?
Uh...
I'll take two.
Okay, so Pat, you're two, Mike is three, and we'll leave Jeff for four.
Sounds good.
I'm sure the chief will speak on that.
Ah, yeah, I told him he'd be there.
Yeah.
And then, did you wanna talk about the MIA issues?
Yeah, I, I had asked, um, it, it, yeah, mm, as we're getting closer to school, people are realizing this time, they actually did cut stuff.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have all the final numbers yet and what the final cuts were made. Um, a lot of it has to do with vacations right now, uh, within the district, they can't get the final information. That was, uh, for, I guess, the final round of cuts, I guess, to get to where we're currently at with the proposed overrides in the towns. That was essentially cutting that, that million dollars, but we are finding out some info, um, and of course, it, it, it's, uh, uh, s- some of that, uh, you know, stems from athletics. And, um, so I, I just wanted to find out, I guess, best we could of, you know, what the itemized listings were of what was cut, and, um, it, it, I, I, I don't know, uh, I don't know really where to go. I mean, it's, seems like it's comprehensive, and it seems like nitpicking is sort of difficult to do, because it's from every, um, branch. But I guess, just from my own personal experience of sports throughout my life and all that, to essentially cut the entire junior varsity programs from soccer, baseball, softball, and then affect the coaching wise as far as JV football, and then cutting the remainder of middle school athletic programs.
Well, they didn't cut middle school. That was another option.
Right. It was, it was, right. But still, the point is, is you cut JV out, you're, you're just pulling the life out of the program.
And they cut JV, uh, actually varsity cheerleading.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I guess that's just, it's, it's just like, you know, it, it, I know that there's gonna be a, a lot of questions asked about that, because as far as I'm concerned, it's essentially giving a death sentence to a program. If you suck out the middle of the program, and you, it's just, you know, you need, the sort of need the feeder levels to be able to get there, so, um, you know, I, I, I know we're gonna find out some additional information. I know, I've heard that there's gonna be some large presence, which actually might be, as we speak,
Yeah.
at a school committee meeting, uh, relative to this issue, but I, I don't, I don't think that one specifically is gonna go away. I don't, I can't speak to any of the detail that's on here, as, as far as what I understand what it takes to operate, you know, the custodial position, you know, that sort of thing. So, the only things that, I guess, me looking at it that I could even just sort of look at to say, "Okay, this is a specific program that's being cut," that, that's the only thing I guess I could even look at and comment on. So, I don't know, I, I, I know we don't have any say in this sort of thing, but I, I'm, uh, concerned what this is gonna do to the athletic programs at Quavon. So, I just wanted to talk about it.
My only concern, too, is that our assessment matches what our assessment would've been for halftime elementary specials. And I know the school committee had voted for it to be full-time, but our assessment is still the same. So, I don't know if they cut other areas.
That's what makes me nervous, too, 'cause these are big numbers that we're looking at here.
Right, or if they're gonna come back again, or how, how we got that number.
So, just to re- reiterate, we heard that the specials are all back in, correct?
Yes, full-time.
Full-time. Again, that's also if these overrides pass.
Right.
But, but it's just, it's assuming for a moment. That assumes all the, the, um, the, the full-time specials are back in. But what we're looking at here has halftime specials only. And so, if they went back, and another iteration that we don't have, if they went to the full-time, then they cut another hundred and eighty thousand from something else, which could be additional programs, who knows?
So, so they're talking, leaving full-time?
They, that's what we heard.
But this doesn't reflect that.
This reflects a half.
Half.
This was the budget information as of July eleven, that they presented at that meeting. During that meeting, a lot of parents stressed that they want full-time specials. So, the school committee voted for Maureen to add back in full-time specials, but I don't know what she cut to get to that point. But our assessment that night, excuse me, is the same amount of the override. So, either they went back and cut more.
They had to have.
Right, but I don't know what they cut.
Correct. So, that's the, the thing we're gonna find out as soon as these people get back from vacation, but,
Yeah.
you know, for example, I mean, the halftime elementaries is, uh, specials is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars ballpark. To cut all those JV soccer, bas, uh, baseball, softball program and a coach for football is thirty thousand dollars, so scale-wise. So, it's like, and, and again, I get it, there's a million items in here that are, are being cut, but, um, we just need to get some more answers for more detail, more than anything to be able to answer questions, too, 'cause right now, I, I am asked a number of questions, and I have, don't know.
Right. The other item, too, and I think I emailed you, is that Mark Wigler came to me on Monday and said that they received more chapter seventy-one Monday, money. So, if tonight at the budget meeting they decide to put that to his assessments, we won't even need an override.
Right. But, all this stuff will still be cut.
Right.
So...
But, uh, I'm sure they're not banking on this override passing in all the towns.
Correct.
So...
So, even additional would be cut.
Yeah.
Or the state comes in and then, you know, who knows what happens, you know? People are forced to pay or not pay. I, I guess we'll have to wait and see. Anyway, I just, it's, we're close to school, and, um, just wanted to sort of keep it on the agenda here, and we're not meeting in a few weeks, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm positive it's gonna come up, so, anyway, okay, thanks for putting that on air.
No problem. Okay, so the next item is the Massachusetts State Police wives are requesting to place blue ribbons on several areas, trees, four trees in our parking lot right here, and then at the gazebo on the rec field, and certain trees at the rec field, and the gazebo next to the fire station.
Come again?
They wanna put blue ribbons.
Who now, again?
This is the Massachusetts State Police wives.
Okay.
Would like to place blue ribbons in certain areas around town, for the blue lives matter. And so, they want four trees in our parking lot right now. They want the gazebo at the rec field, trees at the rec field, and the gazebo at the fire station to place the ribbons.
Hmm. You know, we've had a, uh, since I've been here, uh, and, and I, you know, Michael's here a lot longer than I have, but we have avoided getting involved in these sorts of things, like making a certain day, such and such day, uh, annually, you know, and, and there have been a lot of them that have come across, that you can, and they're good, um, you know, uh, policies or practices, or, or, um, reasons, and I think we should be consistent with that. I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, you know.
Yeah.
As much as, as much as we're, uh, as I'm for, you know, police and public safety across the board, I, I think we have a certain way that, that we do things.
Alright. Okay, next up is some licensing issues. So, the first one is, uh, One Stop Shop. Mr. Mike, formerly Mr. Mike's, wants to change their selling time on Sundays from noon to ten AM.
Alcohol sales.
Yes. And so...
The other, do we, is this just, could, we voted on this a few years ago to be able to allow it? It doesn't just automatically?
They still have been selling, well, that was Mr. Mike's. So, when I think One Stop Shop took over, it was, the sell time was noon, so they now wanna make it ten o'clock.
Do we even have to?
I'm not sure in the past. Yes, you do have to vote and sign to allow.
What is the, um, place across the street, the little market?
I don't know.
No.
Ten. They are ten also, so...
They're ten now.
That was a quick answer.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I was told.
Okay.
So, I think it's just because it took over from Mr. Mike's.
But I don't, so that, that Hubbard's Market must've had to request the moving it.
They have to request that, because it's down to the local licensing.
I remember voting on it, but I di, I thought it was like, I didn't think it was specific to a facility. I thought we adopted it as a town, to say it moves from twelve to ten on Sundays.
We didn't find anything. In fact, we don't even have a real, like, written policy to follow. And so, Tony and I are gonna work on that in the future, and then if you want to adopt that as a standard town.
I wonder what the state law is for the earliest that.
It's ten.
It's ten. And then I thought we adopted that. I thought we said, it was like, two years ago, it, it, it came in front of us, and maybe I'll look back at some old minutes, see if I can find something. But, anyway, I, I don't see why we would restrict these guys if we have the other guys, so...
Okay. So, I just need you to vote on that, and then sign and pick work.
Alright, I make a motion that we, uh, change the selling time from twelve to ten AM for One Stop Shop.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one is Hubbard's and Rod and Gun. We're back again for signatures.
For the same?
Same thing. The whole application has to be typed, not handwritten. And I swear, this is the last time I will come to you with this application, this one, though. Hubbard's and Rod and Gun has come, and they've filled, uh, out, they've signed it, it's ready to go. It has to be the last time. So, I need you to just vote on it again, signing it, just to change of manager, and then sign it one last time.
And that one's, okay, so this is the, uh, we gotta vote on this first, and then we all sign it?
Yes.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion to sign the Hubbard's and Rod and Gun change of manager, again.
Okay. Second?
Yes, I second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
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 I just thought they kept the change of managers.
Just one copy here?
Yeah, I'll be going through them quick.
That one's gonna go to Jamie.
Oh.
Fence looks nice.
Oh, yeah.
People've been using it.
No, that gets a lot of use.
It does.
Yeah, that, that looks great.
That's nice. Okay, next up is appointments, so the first one we have is, there's two new hires, Tanya, uh, new executive administrative assistant, that would be retroactive to August first. And then we have a new mart driver, which would be retroactive to July twenty fifth. So, that would just waive the notification period on those two.
I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for Tanya to August first.
Yes.
And David to July twenty fifth.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have an uh membership renewal form for Worcester County Selectmen's Association, I don't know if anybody would like to be the representative for that this year?
So I did it, uh, I think it was two years ago, two or three years ago, I went to a couple of the meetings, um, I reported back, I mean, it was it was interesting and and um it was a little bit of a B I T C H session between, you know, other select board members in there, but not that much of it. There was, there was some pretty specific, like, at the time, there was casino talk in Lemonster and Sterling was there because they weren't gonna get, receive any money cause their road wasn't, so anyway, there was some but I don't think there, so it was some collaboration of ideas, cause there were other uh areas, uh, towns that had had, not necessarily similar, but figure out which sort of red tape to go through to find out and get information for, so I sort of got that um impression out of some of it, but I I sort of left and said, I don't know, that we um will, I stopped going because I I didn't know, but but still, feel free, anybody, I just, that's my impression of what I got.
I know. I mean, it's only fifty dollars to join, but if nobody's interested, you can skip it this year, depends on you and Pat, I know you have a lot of free time.
I'm good. I'm good.
No, okay, alright, and then one last appointment, you need a, what is Selectman rep for the Economic Development Committee?
Okay.
I'd like to be on the.
Okay.
Yep. Sounds good.
Alright, so if you wanted to take a vote to mention that Pat is going to be the rep.
I'll make a motion that Pat's gonna be the uh rep for the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then committee updates?
Okay, two fiftieth, nothing, uh, Michael would be doing that anyway, but I don't know of any, any updates there. Uh, building committee, we have a meeting Friday, I think, right, I emailed Tony today, wasn't sure, he's he's on vacation, I got a
Okay.
a a response back, I'm pretty sure we have a meeting tomorrow.
Is he back? Yeah, cause it's his, he has twelve.
Yeah, so, um, we have a a a meeting and we'll have to get an update, uh, we haven't had much of an update since the last time, I think I reported back a couple of weeks ago, but the point is, is, and I've sort of, not been putting crazy pressure on him, but I I always sort of update and ask about, schedule, 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 because we we we, some of that urgency went away when we, you guys voted to push off any senior center vote towards the general election in November, so
Mm-hmm.
but I don't want him thinking that, that he can just drag his feet, he's not a foot dragger anyway, but still, just get it going, get the design finished, get the bid documents done so that we have we have plenty of time and plenty of information to present to the town, so that's where that stands. Task force, they just keep canceling our meetings, we were supposed to have one, um
Twenty third.
Twenty third, which was gonna be a problem with the special town meeting.
Right.
Anyway, but um I think all the other towns are sort of going through the same thing, so they pushed it until September eighth. Well, we'll reinvigorate that discussion, do you have anything to add as far as Collin Center stuff?
No, the only item that I had was that I just contacted Monica just to change the date.
Yeah.
That's it, she's gonna contact Maureen.
Yeah.
To start getting some data.
It's sort of impossible to do anything in the summertime.
Right.
And then town center committee, I, uh, no change except for the fact that, uh, not even a change, but our next meeting is pushed off until August twenty fifth, the Thursday, as I told you guys before, when the two WBI students will be coming with their advisor to start, start the um, scope and research process for different town center stuff, that's it.
Okay, town administrative report, the first item is the myogram applications are in and so there are two items that they would be going for. Chief Perrin's gonna be looking into body cameras and he's already started pricing those out, and the DPW is going to be looking for surveillance cameras at the barn.
I read the, uh, cause they they, I think they allocated, I can't remember how much money, it was a fair amount of money, City of Boston, um, for a pilot program.
Yeah.
Um, and and it was all gonna be based on volunteers. I don't know what he wants to do it. So they're gonna, they're thinking about having to have to go to the union and force, I don't know if the right word is, but it's to to to, the pilot program wasn't gonna.
Yeah, they don't want.
Wasn't.
Yeah, I think the unions are pushing back against the cameras.
Yeah, oh, clearly.
They are.
Because like they don't want them to be able to review the cam, re- review the footage before you do your report.
Hmm.
It's like, do your report, that's what I was, and I'd heard.
Uh, this actually might, the next item might be of interest to the town center committee, so on the thirty first, the legislature enacted major bills and one of them was an economic development bill. And in that, aside from the strap grants, is a establishment of a community benefit district where it will revitalize downtowns.
Hmm.
And so it's a new program where the people that live in that area would have more control over that center, that downtown district. And so, I'm gonna gather more information and then forward it to your town center committee for that.
Okay. Sounds good, yeah, no, thanks.
Uh, green community designation, over the next couple of weeks, I'll be reviewing the steps that the town needs to go to through to be designated a green community. Once we designate a green community, we can apply for more grant awards through that program, so I might be coming back to you from time to time to approve certain criteria for that.
Just to step back on the town center committee thing, I've been, I've gotten a number of questions of, you know, how can we possibly do this when we have all these problems with budget, no. And I think that the the center committee, A, we had a charge to be able to get to this point, we're gonna get a schematic design, so that's al- always been the case. But I, you know, we're pretty much all on the same page about the fact that the town's not just gonna be paying for this out of capital money, we're gonna have to get something like this.
Right.
A complete streets program, a mass works, a strap, a CDPG, so some sort of assistance, but there's no reason not to put the effort in to have some sort of a design or plan so that when that, if that happens, however many years from now, we can do it.
Right, when I read that, I was like, this is, this would be perfect for us, so, I'll try to grab as much as I can.
Yeah, oh my goodness. Yeah.
Uh, DPW safety policies, in discussions with certain employees, I discovered that there are some safety procedures that aren't being followed and so, and there is no manual that they have in place, so Tim and I are gonna be working on that over the next couple of weeks and you'll probably see that coming up at a future meeting.
Okay.
We had a charge back in March, I think it was Mike that had mentioned looking into charging a per-table fee for the services that they use on Sundays, police and fire, a couple of the towns have tried it, but there's been some legal issues with them being enacted and so Joel is actually looking into talking to the attorney that dealt with both towns that had the issues and will get back to me as to why they couldn't do that.
I'm not in favor then.
No, I'm not.
Right, either ten dollars a table or eight degrees.
I can't, and it's just, we got plenty of people driving up and down the street.
Yeah, so, uh, next is the town administrative search committee, the applications were due today by five o'clock. Uh, and then they're gonna be meeting on the, like, next week, and then they're gonna be starting to schedule interviews the week of the twenty ninth.
What, um, what, remind us, your contract, current contract goes through?
It ends October eighth.
Okay.
So they're looking to hopefully do the interviews the week of the twenty ninth.
Mm-hmm.
And then present the final three at your September sixth meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can do your interviews at your September nineteenth meeting.
How many applications did we get, do you know?
I think it was ten or eleven.
Ten or eleven, was yours one of those?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And then finally, we just wanted to thank, uh, Bo Beauregard, Bob Beauregard and his entire staff at Country Hen for welcoming Dan and I to two of their facilities last week, which was very informative.
Yeah, and important for our town, I mean, we've got, especially with the expansion that they're doing, we got all the stats on how many, you know, birds they got there, you know, it's gonna end up being a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, definitely.
And this classification of what cage-free means and what organic is matters so much to them, I mean, the effects that they see that they would have on again, we all buy cheap eggs at Country Trail and whatnot, but, you know, we sort of have it good, but for for what they would have to, they send, they send to thirty-two states, I think he said? They send the eggs to thirty-two or thirty-eight states and the uh the effect on the egg, for them to lose that classification, they think would like double to triple what they would have to to keep operations the same way, it's like a big deal, you could tell, they had their executive vice president from California come out from whatever the name of that farm.
Uh, Hidden Villa.
Yeah, yeah, Hidden Villa Farm who came out and, um, you know, it just happened in California too, it's just sort of happening across, they're they're lobbying all across the country here, but it's you know, they're our largest employee, four, forty, forty employees, a lot of tax revenue and a lot of goodwill and all that other stuff that that we felt pride having them in town, so um, I hope, I hope, uh, our congressman's able to help out.
I hope so, and that's it for the town administrative report. And then Tony's been flying through minutes and so we have six meeting minutes to approve.
Yes. Yes.
I was there for all of them except for May.
Okay.
May fifth.
So we'll we'll vote on all those, cause only you and I, Jamie I don't think was on any of these, right?
No, actually, if you're not there May fifth, then those cannot be approved because, so we'll keep those for next time.
Hmm. Correct.
May fifth.
Yes.
Okay.
So we can approve the other ones, right?
You can, cause they're both there.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of April twenty fifth, May sixteenth, June thirteenth, June twenty seventh and July eleventh.
Can I, it's okay for me to second them?
Like, no.
No, you're gonna, okay.
I'll second, so, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. You getting sick of watching us on TV?
No.
Is that how you've been doing it? Uh, it has to be, right?
She feels like she knew you guys, it's been so long. Okay, and any old business.
Well, I just had a question, any news on the ta- tax collector?
So she had a date on August third and I went down there and it was postponed till the thirty first.
And that's at Worcester Superior Court?
Yes, so I was able to get someone at, that works at the courthouse that I can call the day before to see, to make sure that I don't have to go all the way down there if it's just gonna be postponed again. Other than that, there's nothing there.
Did you hear, ever hear what happened when Anita went down there, towards?
One of them?
Oh, yeah, it was like the last time she went.
Yeah.
Like a like a guy took off, like a, jumped off the third balcony in the middle of the thing.
Well, I heard about that in the news, how often.
She was right there, watching.
Yeah, she was there.
Wow, now, it's funny, I I know a uh court officer that used to work there and he said, he worked at the old courthouse and they built the new one and that's exactly what he said would happen.
Really?
Really.
He said this big
Yeah, yeah.
balcony is, he said someone's gonna get pushed off of there.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Alrighty.
And this guy jumped off.
Yeah. I don't have anything else.
Alright, public press question and answers?
Anyone?
I guess not.
No, okay, now we just need to go adjourn and go into executive session without returning to session.
Make a motion to adjourn and go into executive session without returning to regular.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Go call.
That.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay.